Probably trauma.
Definitely.
You want it on right now?
No.
We have a couple of things just we're gonna write it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's on the internet right there.
It's on Greyhound TV, right?
Greyhound TV and it's being livestreamed on the internet. Greyhound TV, scroll down to the bottom, live streaming, something like that.
Do they want chairs, Mr.?
Do you want chairs? Maybe just pull.
Makes me uncomfortable.
How many people need a agenda?
Thank you for supper, you.
Tom?
That was really nice. I just grabbed some coffee, I thought, well.
So that was nice.
Not for ya.
Okay, we can solve that. Thank you.
Tom, just go right around that way.
No, no, you're fine. I'm okay.
Put sit in the hallway.
Thank you for telling me. You wouldn't have known it.
Till you watched it back.
Great.
Oh, there's my head all night. Alright guys, it is after eight, so we will go ahead and get started. Um, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, Tom.
I think we are, yeah, we already did the roll call.
We didn't do it back into open, though.
Okay, so Jen?
Yep.
Carrie?
Harlan?
Yep.
Kara?
Yep.
Kim?
Yeah.
Tom, yes.
Okay, alright, we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God and in his will with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you everybody for coming tonight. Um, we will open up right away with, um, a public comments. Suzie, did you have anything?
No, we just, I have presented this little comment, I just, if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Chris, did you have anything?
Nope, I talked to Dan a little bit, uh, after school yesterday.
Okay.
So thinks it, I think it looks all.
It's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
You'll be in touch?
I'll be in touch with you here, and Dan and I will be before the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Alrighty.
So you don't need anything else from me then?
I think we're good in talking with Dan. He said it looked good, so.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Got it.
I'll talk to him a little bit more. I'm gone tomorrow, but I'll talk to him Friday a little bit and we will get back to you, one of us will get back to you Friday.
Okay, so you don't need anything else.
I think we're good. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, we are going to go ahead and take a look at our agenda here. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Liedner?
Yes, we need to add, um, approval of FEMA grant application. After the presentation, discuss and approve. And then, um, also add a, um, advertising spot for a part-time translator.
Okay, so we'll make that, uh, six point nine and seven. Rest of, yeah. Okay, so, um, no other changes to the agenda? If we could, um, have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Well, actually, no, I'm sorry, we'll back up. Um, so we're actually already into consent agenda items, so we're gonna be approving multiple things. Um, so, uh, we'll be approving the agenda. Approve minutes of the August board meeting. Did anyone have any questions about any minutes from the August board meeting? Okay, um, we're approving minutes also of the September board meeting. Any questions or concerns there? Okay, um, then we are approving minutes of the special board meeting on August twenty-fourth and September twenty-first. We're also approving minutes of the September sixteenth Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. Did anybody have any concerns about any of the meeting minutes we're approving tonight? Okay, and then we do have our financial reports listed here. Kiri, what do you have for us with finances?
Uh, I don't have anything. Anybody have any questions?
I was in today just to, um, ask a couple of questions. One was on, I think, the shared position for the special ed director that, um, did them?
Delia?
Delia. That were splitting between us and Owen with the. So that, that showed that we paid half and, you know, so, so I just question on that. And then, um, the math curriculum. And it sounds like that was an upgrade of all the curriculum for junior high as well as high school.
Yes.
And that was just under, I think it was just under sixteen thousand dollars, so it's, um, sizable. Investment that we have back in the, you know, in the math curriculum, so.
Yes, and that was, they had a committee on that, that they picked that out and, and it included Mr. Dismet with that, so.
Right.
It was up to where he was comfortable with the curriculum that they were getting, so. And it's seven through, yeah, seven through twelve, yeah.
Anything else?
I didn't have any other questions.
Okay, if no one has any questions or concerns, um, about our consent agenda items, I would ask for a motion to approve all.
I'll make that motion.
Harlan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move right along then to old business. Oh, I'm so sorry. Alright, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, those are all approved. Alright, old business, um, our technology committee met tonight for our long-term strategic planning. Um, is there somebody who'd like to report on that?
Yeah, I can report on that. Um, so we talked about a number of priorities, um, so my notes here are, um, the first priority was the core switches. Um, finish updating those the rest of the year. There's two in the high school and two in the elementary that need to be replaced yet. Um, the smooth wall, that's the classroom management, um, upgrading that this year. Um, for priority two, uh, we discussed the digital equity questions through DPI. That was the, uh, survey that, um, parents were given when they registered their, their kids on internet access. We also discussed the hotspots, um, discussion around a policy with those. Um, Scott's gonna get some recommendations and, um, we'll bring that back. Um, we currently have thirty-six hotspots, um, for our school, we have thirty-three US Solar, six Verizon. Um, we discussed the, the cost of those are forty-five dollars a month. Um, we don't have to pay for, um, them if, if they're not out in use by the, by the students. Um, priority three, um, students in grades three through twelve, they all have computers, um, they're one-to-one. Let's see.
Did you say two or three, Kara?
Two or three what?
What grade, two or three?
Uh, grades three through twelve.
Three through twelve.
Yep. Um, there is training going on in the classroom, um, on Google Classroom, Tammy is, uh, taking care of that. Um, and then priority four, we discussed, um, cameras. Um, let's see. There's some, a few dark spots that we're looking at. Um, and then there's a few on hand, um, in stock and a few more that we might need to purchase. Did I miss anything from anybody else? Oh, we did discuss in, in other business, Scott will also be looking at the, or checking on the programming for the gate security out by the, by the playground area there. Any questions?
Thank you, Kara. Alright, we'll move into new business. Um, we do have a presentation for, um, an insurance renewal proposal this evening.
We have Brian Hess here.
And Adam Cole.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, everyone for having us, uh, dear lovely town. Uh, my name's Adam Cole and I'm with the Insurance Center. I am, uh, forty years old, from Duluth, Minnesota, and, uh, live in La Crosse, which is our home office right now. And been in the insurance industry sixteen years. Uh, married fifteen years and a seven and nine-year-old. Brian?
Yeah, um, I'm Brian Hess and you don't wanna know how old I am. Um, I've been in insurance a long time, started with Wassa, back when they were still here and I'm originally from Wassa. Uh, I have three kids, twenty-nine, twenty-three, and seventeen, and we live in Kimberly.
And he left out that he just had his first granddaughter two weeks ago. So he's a little, he's a little bit happy about that. He'll show you all pictures, I'm sure. So we can probably go to the next slide.
Thank you.
Uh, probably next one, here we go. Yep, next one will be good. Uh, today, we're, we're here to talk to you about, a little bit about who the Insurance Center is, a little bit about our experience in school districts. The coverage, we did a coverage comparison for you that kinda took what you have now and maybe some areas of upgrades that we looked at. And we're gonna talk about the pricing that we're gonna be offering, along with the dividend on the work comp and then some value-added resources. So, go ahead and go next slide. So the Insurance Center, we've been around since the nineteen-sixties, nineteen sixty-five to be exact. We're about a hundred and fifty employees, eleven, uh, locations in Wisconsin and one in Iowa. And we're proud members of what's called the, uh, Council of Insurance Agents and Brokers. And one of two members in Wisconsin, and what that is, is basically the top two-hundred brokers in the entire world that serve eighty-five percent of the property casualty premium. So we're very, uh, proud to be a member of that. And really, the Insurance Center's a family business, owned by one man out of La Crosse, very family-oriented. And our five values at the Insurance Center that we live by are really integrity, compassion, service, commitment, and stewardship. It's, it's what we wake up, it's how we hire, it's how we wanna serve our clients, and it's certainly how we would serve you. So we just appreciate you having us tonight. Now Brian's gonna talk a little bit about our experience, uh, with school districts.
Alright, thank you, Adam. Um, yeah, I had mentioned I was with Wassa. Back when I was with Wassa, I was a work comp claim adjuster. And most of the, uh, claims I worked on were school claims because that's all Wassa, Wassa Insurance, all the schools. Cities, towns, villages, and municipalities, and, uh, counties back in the day. So, was very involved right away in my insurance career with schools. Eventually, I went into sales with Wassa, again, working mainly on schools. And after about eight years with Wassa, I went to the, um, Insurance Center and just met some people, networked and said, I wanna get a school program independent of the captive situation. We would call Wassa captive because that's the only choice of insurance they offer. So I did start at that around nineteen ninety-nine with no schools. And through the years, we've grown the program, we've added, uh, there's two other main producers and myself that sell schools at the Insurance Center. So three of us, we have a solid support staff. Um, we've become a gold member sponsorship at the convention down in Milwaukee in January. Um, you know, and I think most people are members of the WASBO, WASBO and WAS, WASB. We have recently joined the Wisconsin Rural School Alliance. Um, and many of our customers, one of the reasons we did that, many of our school districts are the smaller ones and in the rural setting. Uh, Bob House at Owen, I've insured him for fifteen years, I think. And those are the type of customers that seem, we seem to just have a good match with. Uh, we currently protect fifty-one schools in the state for the property casualty coverage. Um, you probably all know, there's about four-hundred-and-thirty now districts to be had, so we feel like we have some penetration. And the carriers that we have, will be presenting and have presented this year most often are WSI for the package property liability and AmTrust on the workers' compensation coverage. Next slide, please.
So as we, as we get into coverage, we realize it's eight fifteen at night and we have about four slides that we tried, we tried to kinda do the work for you and say, what did we quote and what do you currently have? And what we thought would be in everybody's best interest tonight is to talk about seven upgrades that, that we see in our program compared to what you have now. Now for, we will leave behind all this analysis for you and, and we're here to answer questions at any time. But if it's okay with you, we'll kinda talk about the seven different areas and be here to keep it conversational and answer any questions. So why don't you start, Brian, with, uh, forgery and alteration?
Sure, I will do that, yeah. And we think, we are going to concentrate on three, three specific areas on this side. The first is forgery, so physically, this would still not be an electronic crime against the school. But if somebody actually somehow got a hold of a check and forged Loyola School District's name, or maybe Eva's name to it. Um, we would have coverage for a loss like that up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Uh, you currently have coverage for twenty-five thousand dollars. So we think that, you know, we'd rather have you in that position, two-hundred-and-fifty versus twenty-five thousand. Computer frauds and fund transfer, did I miss one?
Right here, no, you're good.
Good.
I'm, I'm Vanna White.
Oh, you're okay.
I am the Vanna White of the presentation.
So we're just making this up as we go along.
Yeah.
You can see that, but, yeah, we have, um, two-hundred-and-fifty, oh, I'm sorry, this is current two-and-fifty, we have five-hundred thousand.
So computer fraud and funds transfer, just to kinda add on to Brian, we've doubled the limit for, for one main reason. We've seen a lot of hackers hack into computer systems, it happened to the Insurance Center. And what they'll do is hack into the computer system and redirect an important payout, like payroll, as an example. So if that should happen and they get into your system and move funds, these hackers, we've doubled your limit to five-hundred thousand where it is currently two-fifty. And we have seen some claims in school districts, especially when it comes to payouts, that have been pretty significant in the past couple of years.
Absolutely.
So. And then, um, the last one on this page, we'll kinda talk about three each page, is what's called fraudulent impersonation. And another name in our industry is called social engineering. And again, along the same lines, this is when the computer hacker is watching your system. And what they do is they fish for you and instead of making a payment to a vendor that you believe you are, they've changed one letter and they've tricked you into sending hundreds of thousands of dollars to them. And before you know that there was a letter changed, the money is gone, the FBI is called and it's very difficult to recover. Now, there's a school district nearby where this exact scenario happened, where a contractor that they were going to, that they did business with, change, the hacker watched the contractor's address and theirs, changed some things around, they released, how much money? Five-hundred-and-some thousand dollars?
Six-sixty.
Six-sixty, and then basically the money was gone. So we try to ask, uh, policy limits on this, so we brought in three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this type of coverage where you currently have a hundred. So, we'll stop here, do you guys have any questions on those three items at all?
I'll, I'll add to that. Um, on this coverage, there is a provision on your current policy called a callback verification option. So that they require that if you have a loss and you make claim, in order to be compensated for that claim, you have to prove that you called all the creditors or people that you worked with during the course of the year. If you failed to do one of those, didn't make a call on, say, a seven-thousand-dollar transfer, you don't have coverage for that loss. And we feel like, like when I found out about this, I was upset because this is a coverage that is, whoops, Eva wasn't here. Somebody else was here and got duped into transferring the money to the wrong account. And now, at the end of the day, we're gonna change it and say, oh, you know, it's, it's like fine print trying to get out of paying the claim. So, the coverage that we're offering does not have the callback provision. That's, that's something that not everybody talks about.
Okay, and again, this is a, a lot of words that we're gonna leave behind, but again, doing that comparison for you to kinda leave behind. But, um, the three coverages on this page, um, that we wanna specifically point out is that your liability limits for the school district are currently two million dollars per occurrence. And then if I sneak down here, you have a three-million-dollar umbrella. So, when, when people hear the word liability, they, they tend to confuse it. And it's really pretty simple, liability covers two things. It covers property damage and bodily injury that Loyola School District is negligent for, meaning did something wrong. So on your current policy, like I said, you have two million per occurrence. And if there was a bodily injury or a property damage that required more, you would have another three million, in, in any case, five. On ours, we've matched it, but it's a little bit different and I wanna provide clarity. We have one million per occurrence, but we have a four-million-dollar umbrella to give you the same five million dollars. So these policies match per occurrence, they're just written slightly differently per the carrier. So that's one thing, uh, we wanted to point out. Another is uninsured and uninsured motorists on the auto policy. I believe there are five vehicles, right, Brian, on the policy right now? Um, the best way to describe uninsured and uninsured motors coverage is right now in loyal, maybe not right now, but tomorrow. Somebody may be driving around with no insurance or not enough. If this individual runs a stop sign and hits anybody in a loyal district vehicle and doesn't have any insurance, uninsured motors coverage is designed to pay what you would've gotten from that individual with no insurance or not enough. And what we believe at the Insurance Center is we've written a million dollars because we see a lot of claims that, you know, work comp will cover the employee first, but work comp cannot cover pain and suffering or such things as the cost to redo your house to make it handicap accessible. So we believe in maxing out these limits at the Insurance Center. And right now, you have five-hundred thousand of uninsured motors, where we brought in a million. So, uh, what was the other one on this one, Brian?
Well, that's gonna be educator legal liability.
Yep.
And, um, here, the same concept. Currently, there's two underlying and then that umbrella of three. We're gonna have one million and four for a total of five, just wanna make sure we know that. The, the main difference here is we have defense limits built in, I couldn't find them in the, um, the information I was given, so I left that blank. Um, but the deductibles, you will see that you're currently at a thousand and we're at ten thousand. You might think, wow, that's a big, a big difference, right? And I asked the underwriter about that. Um, it's this company's opinion and I, I agree. When you have this type of claim, uh, school board legal, it's usually not a small one, it's a bigger claim. And they like to feel like we're all in it together. You know, they want everyone to share in the cost of the bigger claim. The other thing, having that larger deductible is it allows our underwriter to price fairly aggressively and maintain those prices. Um, we've had great experience with WSI over the last five years, um, where we've brought in low, very aggressive, fairly priced underwritten rates and they've kept them there. And this is the main reason, because of that bigger deductible.
We can go to the next page.
Okay.
The last coverage item, I mean, you guys are being great sports at eight fifteen, so we're through six of them. I would say, and Brian, you'd have to agree, if, if there's the number one reason why we wrote, um, eight school districts this year, it is this coverage right here that we're about to talk about. And ma- maybe some of you have heard of the, of the coverage, cyber liability. And it is one of the fastest consumer-driven insurance products now. Billions of dollars worth of insurance payouts with this type of claim. So, uh, the best way to explain the policy that we brought in versus the one you have is probably using, uh, my dad as an example. He's, he had some heart issues and his, his doctor, his general practitioner caught it, which is a good thing. But then he sent them to a cardiologist, somebody that does heart surgeries. So thank God, when it comes to cyber liability, the stance that the Insurance Center takes is to go to the specialist, go to the cardiologist. And what you will see when we leave this page behind is that the policy we've brought typically provides you a million dollars for cyber liability and the many expenses that happen when you are breached. Where the current policy has a lot of sub-limits, is what we call it, at fifty thousand or a hundred. So what we wanna try to do in our cyber policy for you and the rest of our school districts is when you have a problem, as many of those problems as possible, we have a million dollars to cover whatever that scenario will be. Because there's generally three buckets when it comes to cyber liability. The first one is incident response. Oh my goodness, we've been breached, you're probably gonna call your attorney, that's an expense. You're gonna call the forensic team, that's an expense. You might have to monitor records, that's an expense. The next bucket is first-party expense, meaning what is it gonna cost for the forensic team to diagnose, now fix this? And are the hackers extorting us? And the third bucket is the scariest to me, it's called third-party liability. Meaning people got in your system and because of that, everybody in your outbox got the same phishing email and they're going through the same process and they school, and they sue Loyola School District. So we typically retain about seven percent of what we hear, insurance is more like a half of one percent. I would say cyber liability, looking at your policy to date and what we brought in is probably the biggest upgrade that we've made 'cause we brought in a specialist, we've tried to give you a million dollars in as many areas as possible for the buckets that you could be hit where you currently have many sub-limits. So, and we're gonna leave this behind where you can kinda do it and we're available for any questions after the fact if you wanna know more about how these coverages work or some of the experience that we've had, so.
Adam, I'll just add to that.
You wanna add water?
Sure. A school right in this area, Medford, they're the largest virtual school district in the state, have more virtual kids than anywhere. Do a great job, we were just fortunate enough to earn their business this year. This is the exact same policy that we put in at, uh, Medford. And they have, they have their exposures there. They have a, a real challenge with making sure they're protecting their cyber students and teachers and everybody. So, yeah, I'm, I'm bullish on this policy, be with Adam a hundred percent, everything he said.
Yep, next slide. And we're, we're rounding third now, we can keep going, that's just more on the cyber, so we'll, we'll keep going. Uh, pricing, which is usually pretty interesting. Brian, why don't you walk through pricing, uh, in our program versus the one they currently have?
Sure. The commercial package, again, that would include the property insurance, the buildings that we're currently in, the general liability, the auto liability, school board legal that we're talking about. Um, very pretty close right there, not a ton of spread of difference in pricing. Um, we, our underwriter worked very hard to get there, um, negotiated a little bit hard, but that's okay. The state of Wisconsin sets the rate and the experience modification factor, which determines your final premium of twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So this is all based on estimated payrolls, as you all know. And then at the end of the year, they audit that, those payrolls. And your dividend will actually be paid on the audited amount of work comp premium that you paid in. So we'll, for our purpose, we'll say that it's twenty-eight thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen. You just kept track of those books so good, you know, you didn't miss it by a dollar. Um, what we would pay is thirty percent of that twenty-eight thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. It's about eighty-five-hundred-dollar dividend that, um, we, I get to come out and drop off a check and give it to Chris and say, go build a turf field or something, okay?
And when it comes to dividends, there's really two types. There's the flat, which we call kind of bird in hand, meaning regardless of the claims you have in the next year, thirty percent is the offer of the premium that will come back to you. We're not allowed to say they're guaranteed, but we will tell you that is, is a flat dividend that does not constitute claims. The other type of dividend is what's called a variable, and that's just you earn it based on your claim history. So we're taking out any type of claims that can happen in work comp and saying you have thirty bird in hand regardless of your claims. And right now, it is thirteen percent. And that's where a lot of the savings is coming from.
It is, that's the majority of it. We took the liberty of netting that out, bottom line, so this would be that the difference between the bottom numbers are the twenty-five-hundred-ish and, uh, the difference between the dividends.
So the non-work comp for us is thirty-five, thirty-thousand-five-hundred. So the non-work comp for us is 35, $30,500. The non-work comp for them is $33,139. And that includes all the upgrades, including the cyber and all the other items that we talked about, and we left behind kind of the verify, the building limits and all the other kind of limits that are in there, so.
There's a specific premium breakdown in the bid spec page that you'll see what each line of coverage costs, and that's attached in a separate PDF.
You want to do the last page, services?
Sure.
We're at last page, everyone, thanks for hanging in.
Slide into home there.
I told my wife we have the task of explaining insurance at 8:30 at night, so please keep us in your head.
We are a member of Ziwave, and with, it's an OSHA-based database that we're allowed to share with you. And you know, if you ever need anything that might be safety-related, come to me and we can hook you up with that. Specifically, though, we have a learning library within Ziwave, so there's over 250 videos, all updated. I mean, what I like about the learning library people is they cull the list. So if you have 16 of them that nobody's ever watched, they get rid of them, and they put in ones that they watch the, who's watching what? See who's videoing the content, and they add according to that. OSHA logs, we do that for our contractors, but we also can vary that for DSPS reporting purposes in March. If you want any help with that, let us know. Wildcard, that's a company, Auburndale, just down the street, just hired Wildcard based on our recommendation. They are a, so Adam and I have always been talking about what happens after a cyber claim occurs. Wildcard would come in and they would do penetration testing. We've actually hired them at our agency, made some recommendations, because we weren't as good as we should be. And we love, they're a great resource. Their people have worked, they have, one who works on the East Coast, that's FBI, CIA. He has done business with all the biggies out there, and it's just an awesome tool that we have right here in central Wisconsin, they're located in Point. If you ever have the need, I would always encourage you to partner with Wildcard. Armor is a broker that we have gone to to provide environmental pollution type, especially with the wonderful place we find in now COVID. They would help with, if you had a mold situation and needed remediation on a school level. They're excellent, they're very, very good. And finally, I work with Steve Zero, I've worked for many years. He's WSIs loss control person. He'd be at your disposal, he lives down, right on the border of southern Wisconsin and Illinois. And, yeah, if we can set that up at no cost to you guys, he's excellent. He's one of the best loss control people in schools that I know.
Well, and thank you, guys, you hung in there, and we can give you a lot more information about this and other. This is like drinking from a fire hose with all the information, but we appreciate your time tonight. You know, in most insurance decisions, there's three main variables that they typically come down to. One is price, is it competitive? Is it comparable to what we have? The second is coverage. Is the coverage, when we have a problem, going to be as good or better? And the last one is service, can we count on them? Will they bring value-added resources? Will they get back to us? What else will they bring to the table for the commissions they're making? So we thank you for your time, and we hope you consider our price. We hope you consider our coverage, and we hope you give us an opportunity to serve you. And we're happy to give you many references in the area of school districts we have. So with that, do you guys have any questions?
They stayed away.
They, I was going to say, I was going to give everybody a shot of coffee before we begin, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So glad you don't need to go under. I want to be the guy walking through the tavern. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Should I say that?
Okay. Next, a new business, we're going to be moving on to hire part-time food service assistants.
Yes. I would like to hire Lisa Mahoney and Rhonda Bauer as our part-time food service assistants.
Okay, if we could please have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Carrie, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have one abstaining, and anyone opposed? All right, then we are hiring Mrs. Mahoney and Mrs. Bauer, thank you. All right, next we will move on to discuss and approve our bus contract addendum.
Yes, in talking with the Greenwood Bus Company, we will have to table this, we're negotiating, but I think we are where we need to be, we're close, so we'll get this figured out. And we had a couple wrinkles where we had a change in possible days and things like that. So we're just ironing that out, and I think we'll be good to go.
Would you like to table this till next month?
That would be good.
Okay, so we will plan to table the bus contract addendum till next month. We will move on to discuss and approve our first reading of the Title IX policy. There is an attachment on Board Docs.
I'll talk just real briefly about it. Our Title IX, it is a federal, if you want to say mandate, that all schools have to do, and the big push was to have a Title IX coordinator, which we do in Angie Comensberger. So what we did was, we got three different Title IX policies from area schools, took it and merged it, merged them to fit our need with our policies that are already kind of representing some of the sexual harassment that is, that Title IX is covering. And the big thing for Title IX is the sexual harassment anywhere in school, and basically having a place for people to go to, to file a complaint or work it out. And Angie or Mrs. Comensberger did an excellent job of fitting all, everything together and covered every basis that we needed to in our policy checklist for Title IX sexual harassment. As you read through it, it has definitions, it has procedures of how to go about filing, grievance process, deals with a lot of different reporting complaints. So she is our coordinator. Our two principals, depending on where it would be, are our decision-makers, I would be the appeal. If Mrs. Comensberger is involved with this, it would go to a secondary coordinator, which would be Mr. Cuddy. So she put a lot of work into it, and I think it is an excellent policy. And it fits ours very well, so.
Wonderful, okay. If we could please have a motion to approve our, the first reading of our Title IX policy.
I'll make that motion.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Carrie, any questions, discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, then we approve the first reading of our Title IX policy. We're going to move on to our next part, do you want to kind of take on three sections, Mr. Lidner?
Yep.
Okay, so we're discussing classroom supervisor, curriculum, and substitute pay. If we want to start with classroom supervisor?
Yes. So we've been in a situation where we need possibility of, our teachers a few weeks ago were, we had like 10 of them quarantined, which they still could teach from home, but we also needed a classroom supervisor in there, in the room while they were out of the room. And we struggled when we had that many teachers out. People were beg, bowered, and steals, and were stolen, and we covered it for those three days, but I would like not to be in a situation where we have to utilize everyone in our own building. So I would like to advertise for a sub-assistant or a classroom advisor or supervisor, paying them $10 an hour to sit and make sure everything is, is all right behavior-wise in that classroom. We do have two right now that kind of work with us on an as-needed basis, so I would just like to build our, our list to make sure that we have, if we do get caught again with a number of teachers out, that we have that capability of being able to put these people in there.
Okay. Do you want to tackle substitute pay next?
Yes. I will go, yes, substitute pay. Our compensation for subs, we've had some troubles finding subs for not only janitorial, but our paraprofessionals also. So I would like the recommendation of our paras adding a dollar to their, their wage, so going from $10 to $11 for our paraprofessioners and our food service. And then our janitors, $1 also going from $11 to $12 for our subpay, compensation for our support staff.
And then curriculum pay?
Curriculum pay. Sitting down and thinking about this, we talked last time a little bit about curriculum pay and raising it from $17 to $25, just because it hasn't been moved in such a long time. We did move our in-house subbing two years ago from 17 to 25. I think this is something that we need to do. I would like to even see maybe a process that we raise extra duty and our leg and things like that up to, so everything is at either $25 or we could go a base pay per hour, which would raise as our base pay would go. So, so today, I could see, I'm going to leave it up to you, but I, my recommendation is to, if we approve the curriculum, I would like to eventually come back and get our extra duty also down the road, and get that built up, and our leg payment out also. I guess I could see tabling this so we could get all this together on one, one approval, and so we can maybe work, instead of just raising it at 25, maybe we can talk a little bit more about the base pay per hour.
Would you like to keep the classroom and substitute pay for approval tonight, or do you want to take everything?
I would, I would keep the classroom supervisor and the substitute compensation. I would recommend passing that, approving that. As far as the curriculum pay?
You'd like to work on that?
I would like, in hindsight, I say curriculum only. I think we need to raise more than just that.
Okay.
So.
Would anyone on the board be opposed to tabling the curriculum pay discussion approval till next month? Everyone okay with it? Okay, so just to recap then, Mr. Lidner, we're looking at the classroom supervisor at $10 per hour, and we're looking at the subpay increase $1 an hour across the board?
Yes.
Okay, and then we will table the curriculum pay. So if I could please have a motion to approve the classroom and subpay?
I'll make that motion.
Carrie, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Harlan, any discussion, concerns, questions? All right, we then approve our classroom pay at $10 per hour and our subpay increase $1 per hour. We will revisit curriculum next month.
Need to forward on it.
Yep, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, Tom. All right, next we'll move on to approving our winter coaches. They are listed in Board Docs. Mr. Lidner, if you wanted to go through those?
Yes. Boys' basketball, we would have head coach Brandon Dismet. JV would be Louis Stiglitz. C-team, Stephen Arch. Eighth grade, Cameron Brusso, with, doing it with Trevon Welkey. And then seventh grade would be Louis Stiglitz. Girls' basketball, head coach Mike Reed. JV, Tony Welkey. Volunteer assistant, Angie Comensberger. Eighth grade, Jaden Peeper. Seventh grade, Jamie Woof. And rest, we would be with Nielsville. So they have handled those coaches at last, since we've been cooperating with them, so.
All right, if I could please have a motion to approve winter coaches?
Make the motion to approve winter coaches.
Kim, is there a second?
I'll start it.
Carrie, any questions about our winter coaches? Can I just ask who Mr. Arch is? I don't recognize anyone.
He is a graduate from Greenwood.
Parent?
Four years ago.
Parent?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Younger guy. Was, went to school in UW River Falls and coached C-team at River Falls basketball, so.
All right, all those in favor of approving the winter coaches, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we welcome those coaches and thank them. Next, we'll move on to discuss and approve revision to 2020-21 school calendar for early release days.
So we listened to our community and went five days, and I think after going a month with it, not only our teaching staff, but our total staff, support staff, anyone has really seen the stretch that everyone has made to make this successful, and that there, the time, with everything that is involved with, that has changed with COVID, we have very limited time to catch up, prepare, and things like that. And everyone, other districts that we have talked to that have gone five days, are experiencing the same, same thing. And I think there's a lot of stress of just, of being, never having a chance to breathe. And we just implemented last Friday a early release, which helped them out immensely. When we had some issues with quarantine and that, we had a one day, a Monday that we closed school, one virtual, I should say, had a virtual day, and that was a very appreciated day by not only our teaching staff, but our support staff. I would recommend that we do more days like this. Virtual reinforcement day is what I like to call them. And we have sat, sat down with our admin team and talked a little bit about what days that we could look at, so maybe it's every other week. And what we have come up with, we share stuff, we share staff with Granton, and not to do what they're doing, but to make sure that that, those staff members are, get the same as everyone else. We are looking at three days of... We are looking at three days up through break, up through Christmas break or up to Christmas break, um, to give them so they have some, some time for, some prep time, some catch-up time and, and ability to work with our virtual students and even some of our strugglers. So we are looking at Fridays, um, I know this is, we would like, we talked about moving it around where you do a Monday or a Wednesday or change it up a little bit. But I think in the, in this case, for these three days until we could maybe sit down and, and talk with Granton and, and come up with some, um, collective days that we are, could do the same with, with the shared employees. I think this would, this will be the, what we need to do. And those days are, uh, November sixth, November twentieth and December eleventh. And what they would be is, would be complete remote days, um, or virtual days where students, if they had stuff to do, they, they would do it virtually. Um, like I said, we'd have the virtual, which we have a handful of virtual students, have them come in and at least touch base with their teachers, um, in the morning so they can take care. And then the teachers would have the rest of the day to get, to reinforce what they were doing, prep and, and catch up and, and things like that. And then, and, and we would evaluate after that what, how did it work, what, what do we need to do, um, other changes, uh, with that, so. And then we could implement that in the second semester. Not looking at a hot days, cause I think we were looking at using some of our professional development days as days that we could do a combination, some PD and then give them time to work also. So those, that's the way. And tell me if I'm wrong, that's what we're looking at and going for. So that's our, my recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Those three days through December.
Okay, um, so right now we would need a motion to approve, uh, virtual days of November sixth, November twentieth and December eleventh. If I could have that motion, please?
Now I'll make a motion.
Davey, is there a second?
I'll say.
Harlan, uh, any questions, concerns about those, any from the board?
Just a question, just to, sorry, when, when you say virtual, meaning that they will be in touch with their, or their, the virtual students could be, could be meeting or.
Meeting with their teachers here.
But it wouldn't be virtual teaching of classes, it's just, it's just.
Bringing the virtual kids so they have.
Right.
Contact with, with their teachers.
Right, that's.
We might even consider renaming that, cause some of our kids may think they're doing a virtual day.
That's why I just wanted to make sure that we have.
So these are days, these are days off for non-virtual kids?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So will they have, maybe they have something with.
Sure, yeah, to catch up on or whatever, but, okay, all right.
But they are not required to do virtual from home? Our kids that are in school.
Strugglers may be brought in, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, thank you for that, Tom. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, uh, November sixth, twentieth and December eleventh will be, uh, days off of kids in school. Hard to frame that. All right, I think we're right on time, um, for our presentation from Jordan Bus, uh, for the FEMA grant.
Yeah.
Are you in here?
Do you have a, um, is that your email?
Yep. I'll check with him real quick now, text him, see if he's. So who we have is, we have Jordan Bus, who is a Spencer Board member. He's, he has written Spencer's FEMA grant and he has written Owen, Abby and Luck last year. So, uh, he did a little presentation to Mrs. Pop, myself and Mr. Lakey last year. And he presented to Mr. Deekman and Miss Kadoff this year, so. Sorry, he's ready.
Mm-hmm. I saw it. Is he on Google? Is it, uh?
Zoom. Are you in?
Yes, trying.
No, 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 just that one dome with half the classrooms in it. Only one dome with half the classrooms in it. I want to see our, I want to see our. Yeah, they wanted another commentary.
Hey, Jordan, can you hear us? Hang on here, we're not getting any audio. Are you there, Jordan? Uh, we can't hear you right now. It'll, it'll, should come through there, but. Just had to hit the power line.
I did.
Even Jordan's laughing.
You want this off?
All right, Jordan, do we have audio? No?
No.
All right, still working on it. Did you hear it?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep, here we go.
You're live.
All right, perfect. Well, thanks for meeting with me.
Thank you, Jordan.
Do we need to put that camera down so you can see us?
Um.
It's that camera there.
Yeah. He's probably staring at the screen, staring.
Oh, there's. Oh, it's on the computer, oh, okay.
You good, white, white lights on, everyone? You want the lights off or you're good?
I'm good.
Good, yeah. I don't know how it goes across the TV, but.
You still there?
Yes, I am. I am ready whenever you guys are.
Okay, should be good.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so just, uh, a little bit about the FEMA brick grant. Um, my name is Jordan Bus, um, with J-Bad Solutions. Um, a little bit about myself, I'm from Spencer, Wisconsin. Um, I've been a school board member there, um, since twenty eighteen and I wrote the, uh, FEMA grant for our school district, um, for two point nine three million dollars that go to, that is going towards our current referendum process, project, um, that is just breaking ground, um, in this past month. As a part of the overall five point nine eight million dollar project. Um, after I successfully, uh, got that FEMA grant, um, for Spencer, um, I decided to, um, form my own company, um, to help school districts like yourself, fund facility projects that otherwise, um, would not, um, get funding or get funded. Um, so this past year in twenty nineteen, I worked with three school districts, um, Abbotsford, Luck and Owen Withie. Um, and all three, um, submitted successful grant applications. Abbotsford for two point one nine million dollars, Luck for two point two two and Owen Withie for one point nine three. Um, all three of those are currently in the FEMA review process and are waiting to, are awaiting to, um, sign paperwork to actually get their funding. Um, and this is just a couple of, uh, renderings of the Spencer project, um, what we anticipated to look like for the exterior as well as, uh, the interior, um, gymnasium, um, in Spencer. Um, so a little bit about the actual FEMA grant application program. Um, the past two years that I applied for, for Spencer and the other three districts, uh, was the FEMA pre-disaster mitigation grant program. That, that program has been discontinued. Um, FEMA is rolling out a new and improved, uh, grant program to replace it. And that is called the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, or BRIC for short. Um, it is an annual grant program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, and their objective in this grant program is to reduce the risk, um, to communities and their individuals and property from natural disasters in the future. Um, and by doing that, they can reduce the reliance on federal funding after those disasters. So it's their way of, uh, mitigation planning in order to break the cycle of sustaining damage from a natural disaster, reconstructing and then just having a repeat, um, occurrence of damage from another, uh, natural disaster. So it's their way of, um, tackling the problem before it happens. So FEMA has done a number of studies where it shows that for every dollar they spend in pre-disaster mitigation, it's like spending six dollars in post-disaster recovery. Um, so this is their way of kind of shifting the, um, I guess, uh, thinking and, um, I guess, strategy for the entire nation, um, away from reconstruction after a disaster to preparing for it prior to. Um, it is a highly competitive national grant program. And this year there's the record amount of five hundred and fifty million dollars available in funding. So just to kind of give you a, a comparison, the past two years have been record years of available funding as well. But those were two hundred and fifty million and two hundred and fifty-two million. So they have more than doubled the amount of funding available in one year with this new grant program. So with that, um, with, with that, um, expansion, um, of the, of the grant funding, I believe that this year would be an excellent year for any project to apply. Cause I don't see the number of applicants significantly increasing enough to match the pace that the funding has increased. Um, so I think it's a, a very good year to, uh, to apply for really any project. So a little bit about the application process. Um, the open application cycle runs from September thirtieth to January twenty-second. So in that window of the open application cycle, you can apply and submit your application at any time. It doesn't matter if you're first on October first to submit it or if you're the last one on January twenty-second. Um, it's just, uh, goes into a pool of applicants and then once the window closes, FEMA evaluates all of the applications. So prior to that January twenty-second deadline, Wisconsin Emergency Management, which is like the state agency, that is in charge of obviously emergency management, um, they have a preliminary deadline of November twentieth to have an application submitted to them. That is just to have a preliminary application to them to make sure that any applicants that are planning to apply, um, they are aware of them and then they have enough time to, uh, to review their application and make sure that they're on the right track to make their application as competitive as possible. That deadline, um, wouldn't be an issue. Um, that seems like a very tight window, but I have a very good working relationship with, um, Wisconsin Emergency Management and they know that, um, any applications that we submit, um, that we know what we're doing and, um, that anything we submit, they know that, um, we will have a very competitive application. So the application deadline, like I said, is January twenty-second on, for this year. After the deadline closes, FEMA, um, needs their review process and they say that they will have a selection announcement somewhere around June first. FEMA's, uh, deadlines for applicants are very hard deadlines. The deadlines that I said are just guidelines. Um, so once a grant application is selected, FEMA then goes through a, a further review process to make sure that everything within the, um, the, uh, the grant application and the project meets all of the requirements. They also do an environmental and historic preservation review, um, to make sure that there aren't any, um, environmental factors that arise in the project and make sure that everything is conforming to, um, different procurement standards. So once the, the application is selected, as long as something unforeseen and really detrimental to the project, um, pops up in the further review process, once you're selected, that essentially means that you have been, um, given the grant. Once that review process is finished, the grant is awarded. Um, and we give the anticipated award date of December thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. That could be significantly, um, earlier or it could be a little later depending on how quickly the review process goes with FEMA. Um, so that can, uh, sorry, my, my kid is crying in the background, if you can hear that. Um, the, uh, once the grant is awarded, construction can start, construction ord, um, construction design. Prior to the grant being awarded, nothing can start on the project, um, that you want to be reimbursed on. So that December thirtieth date is the earliest that you could, um, start construction on a project, uh, with FEMA funding through this program. The period of performance on the grant is thirty-six months from the selection announcement. So if you were to be selected this year, you would have until approximately June first of twenty twenty-four to complete the construction of a, of a community safe room. So a couple of the grant program requirements, um, part of the grant application is a benefit cost analysis. So FEMA wants to make sure that the benefits in, um, you know, providing near absolute life safety in a tornado to, um, you know, saving lives and saving property damage is greater than the costs of the project. Um, so in order to be eligible, uh, you need the benefit cost ratio to be greater than one and we shoot to be around at least at a one point seven to be very competitive. So the way that the funding actually works is, is a cost share or a cost match. Um, so when we put together a budget estimate to submit for the application, we split the estimate into essentially, essentially two pools of money or two buckets, eligible costs and ineligible costs. So FEMA will only pay for expenses that provide and help provide the near absolute life safety for its occupants. So things that are critical for the actual safe room. So things like paint, flooring, um, ceiling tiles, things like that, that are more aesthetics, those are not eligible costs and would be an, an ineligible cost. So once we break out the eligible costs, FEMA will pay for seventy-five percent of the federal, the federal funding will pay for seventy-five percent of those eligible costs. And then twenty-five percent of the eligible costs would come from local funding, um, say from your school district. So that is the standard cost share in the grant program. Now there is, uh, provision in the application for small impoverished communities. So FEMA puts a higher priority, um, for these communities. So it helps your application be selected to be, to meet. So it helps your application be selected to be, to meet the requirements for a small and impoverished community, and it also ups the federal uh funding of eligible costs up to ninety percent. So then your local funding is ten percent of eligible costs. So the metrics that they use for the small and impoverished community is you have to have a population of three thousand or less and not be a part of a greater metropolitan area. You also, your per capita income has to be eighty percent or lower of the national average, and your unemployment rate has to be one percent or higher um than the um, than the national unemployment average. So, based on those numbers um that I, are I believe loyal, would um qualify for those, for the small and impoverished community. Um, the obviously, it is no problem. The per capita income um should be no problem with the data that I've looked up. The hardest one is the unemployment. So FEMA makes the requirement um statutorily that it has to be. The unemployment has to be one percent higher, but there's no real data. They don't, the, the Census Bureau um does not keep unemployment data for specific communities under twenty-five thousand people. So that's where it can get um, it can get interesting where we have to find the best data we can that will support the small and impoverished community, and we write a justification for that. And usually it goes very well, and ones that we've applied for and tried for, we've gotten. But obviously, um, it, it kind of depends. But I, I'm pretty confident that Loyal would qualify for that. And then the maximum federal share um for the eligible costs, it uh is fifty million dollars for a single project. I still put this in there, in the um prior grant program. It was four million dollars. Now they upped it to fifty, um, but I just still leave it in there. Um, so a little bit more about the eligibility. So the city of Loyal, the local government, would actually be the technical applicant. Um, so we would have to work with the city of Loyal to actually be the pass-through entity um for the school district of Loyal to actually apply. Another thing is um, your community has to have a FEMA in Wisconsin Emergency Management-approved hazard mitigation plan. And um, the project has to be consistent with that plan's goals and objectives, which you are covered under um the Clark County Hazard Mitigation Plan. You also have to be registered for the System for Award Management, which you are. And you also need to be within um a specific FEMA wind zone region, um, which you are in the two hundred and fifty mile per hour uh wind zone region, which is good, that um is another metric that the, the application is judged on. And the last one is, well, last main one, um, is the project. The safe room cannot be located um within a floodplain, which this isn't a great, the greatest picture. FEMA's uh, um, flood maps aren't, aren't the greatest, but uh, as you can see, the school is not in a floodplain. Um, so, one, a, a, a few of the great things about this grant program is, is the great flexibility of the, of the application process and um just the entire program as a whole. So like I said, the city of Loyal would actually be the technical applicant um as a kind of a pass-through entity to the, the school district. And that's very simple, um, where the city of Loyal, um, city council would have to pass a resolution um authorizing the school district to apply for um the grant application and give the mayor or alderperson and/or the alder, an alderperson signature authority to actually submit the grant application. So they would be the one that would actually sign the paperwork and press submit on the application. Um, one great thing is there is no fiscal responsibility um until work would begin on the project. So, there are no funds that need to be earmarked. There's no funds that need to be as put down as like a down payment. None, none of that is necessary to pursue the grant application. Um, so the school district of Loyal would just have to submit a cost share agreement, um, which is basically just a letter saying, if we receive this grant, we would be able to um fund the local cost share match. Um, they would also have, you would also have a maintenance agreement, pretty much just stating that this is going to be a part of your building, um, and you would be uh in charge and of all, all maintenance, um, as well as an operations and management agreement as well. So like I said, it's a tremendously flexible program. Um, a great thing is, say you were to apply, um, and you get the grant awarded in next December, and at that time, something drastically changes in your community, in the world, in the country, and it just, it isn't in the cards. Um, you, you, you can't move forward with the project for whatever reason, whether it be funding, um, whatever it may be, you can decline the grant at any time. Break, break ground and taking uh reimbursements from the grant. And that can be declined with no penalties or repercussions whatsoever. So. Oh, like I said, there's no risk in actually pursuing it. You can decline it at any time if, if you are awarded. Um, so a little bit more um in-depth on specifics for your school district. Um, so the first thing that we could do is we, and I'm sorry, I got cut off a little bit here. The, the safe room needs to have a set designated population that you are trying to um provide safety to. So we have to find the eligible population um in FEMA's eyes that we can qualify uh for the safe room. Once we have that population identified, that dictates how big of a area FEMA will pay for. So, in order to identify the population, it is anyone within a half-mile radius um of the safe room at any given time. So what we do is we try and find a moment in time that has the most people within that half-mile radius. And that would be when school is in session, because you have such a highly concentrated number of people at the school. Um, but the first population that we identify is the eligible businesses um within that half-mile radius. So I've kind of gone through um ones that I just could, could find myself. And if we were to apply, we would go through this more with a fine-tooth comb. For how many employees, how many visitors we'd expect in all of these um businesses, and if I missed any businesses. Um, so with the number of businesses within that half-mile radius, um, I estimated a total population of a hundred and six people. The second is the eligible resident population, so people that actually live within that half-mile radius. Um, so I estimated about two hundred and ninety-five single-family homes and apartment complexes, totaling an estimated eight hundred and eighteen people that live within that half-mile radius. Um, after we find that resident population, we have to do some other calculations to ensure that we aren't double-counting students and residents as well as people that um work within that half-mile radius, um, so we aren't double-counting. So based on that, as well as your um enrollment, um, and a little bit about your enrollment, what we like to do is um, we don't use your current enrollment. We will do kind of a, an enrollment capacity study um based on your building's enrollment capacity to make sure that in twenty years, if your enrollment continues to grow um significantly, you won't run out of space in the safe room or um, you know, what your building can handle for students. This also allows us to capture more people as the eligible population, which makes the, the safe room area bigger, which makes your grant amount bigger. So I just estimated at six hundred students and a staff of eighty, added with the resident population of four hundred and fifty-one and the business population of a hundred and six to get one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven people. So what does that mean? I would estimate that that would mean you could be eligible for around ten thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of usable space as a safe, safe room. Um, that includes a main use area, um, which that can be used or configured however you would want. It could be classrooms, it could be a library, it could be a cafeteria, it could be a gymnasium. Um, it could be really whatever you want it to be, as long as within five minutes, um, it could be used as a, as a safe room um shelter, as well as storage for first aid, water, and communication equipment, um, restrooms, always for egress, mechanical room, and then a potential connecting building to connect to your uh current school. So based on those preliminary numbers, um, and based on the four projects that I've completed in the past years, um, I estimated based on those a per-square footage cost, um, and then estimated the grant amount. So based on those um preliminary estimates, I would say that you could be eligible for around just under one point nine million dollars um in a FEMA grant. So with that amount, um, your local funding, which would be your ineligible costs, plus the local cost share would total six hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, or the total project of two point five million dollars. So with that breakdown, you would, you could potentially get a two-point-five-million-dollar project, um, seventy-three point eight percent of that paid for by, by FEMA. And so these numbers, I just want to make sure, you know, I, I clarify, these would be the maximum estimate that you could apply for um and be eligible for. If you wanted to go bigger than that, that is completely fine. Anything that is larger than um the area that you are eligible for, you would just, that would just come out of the local um funding at a hundred percent. If that's too large of a project than what uh meets your, your uh district's needs, we would just simply qualify less people, make it a smaller safe room, and then hone that application into whatever your facility needs are as a district. So what are your next steps? Um, the first, I would say, would be to just determine your level of interest, and then explore what your facility goals and needs are, and determine the ideal timeline of when you want to achieve those goals and when you want to actually make that happen, and let that timeline decide what year to apply. A big portion of that is, if you were to apply this year, you could not start construction until December of twenty twenty-one. If you waited another year and applied in twenty twenty-one, you would not be able to start construction until December of twenty twenty-two. So I would let that kind of determine your application year, along with this year being a great year to apply based on the amount of funding available. Um, once the interest, you know, your interest is determined, and if you want to pursue this, um, we could sign a contract, and we'd begin right away in the research phase um to determine the scope of project that meets your, your district's needs, and we'd begin writing the application right away. Does anyone have any questions?
So. What do, is our city council need to um, they're the, do they then the ones that need to approve it? Or both of us need to approve it?
Um, so, basically, you guys would approve that you want to um, to pursue the grant, and we could um come to an agreement there, and then I would work with you to get any necessary resolutions passed um and presentations to the city, uh, city council. Really, it's just one meeting saying, hey, we want to apply for this grant. There's no um, no ramifications for you. You guys, as the city council, just have to um, just have to approve it and allow us to do it. Um, so it's usually very easy um when we uh, when we present to the city council um to make sure that um it's very clear that there are no ramifications for them. They're just the pass-through entity.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions? Tom?
What would, Jordan, what would the uh normal timeframe be to put, put things together? I know that you said initially that we need to look at that um, I think that just to let the Wisconsin Emergency Management uh, uh, know that we're applying for this. But what would it typically be as far as the amount of time to put an application together?
Um, so the application isn't too terrible um to kind of put together. The, the thing that would be um kind of more of a time crunch to get it um applied for this year would be to just determine what you want to put in, into it. Um, and, and get a floor plan, a preliminary floor plan kind of put together that meets your district's needs. That would be really the only um, the only, I guess, pressing issue um, i- if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I imagine that until we know what we're really wanting to do, it's kind of hard to, to put together the application.
Yeah, I mean, there's many things that I can do in the meantime to make sure that the um, the application i- is as complete as we can get it um prior to having a, a final floor, floor plan. Um, well, not final, but a, a floor plan that is what you want to apply for, I guess, would be a better way of saying it. Um, so I mean, there's, there's many parts of it that I would work on um prior to that, just based on the eligibility of the population, um, different environmental factors. So I mean, you're, you're not behind the eight ball in that respect, really. Um, so I'm working with four other groups um for this year, and none of them have a floor plan yet, so you, you really aren't that far behind at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we pay the consultant's fee beforehand, or is it a part, I mean, is it a percentage of the?
Can you hear or no? When do we pay the consultants?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so I would just work on the retainer. Um, I, I don't want to um make districts put forth money just on a, a chance for a grant. Um, you know, I, I want to, I want to make it work for school districts. I want to make sure that, um, you know, it, it's a win for any school district that wants to apply for this grant. So, so that way, I just work on, you know, the, the retainer until um the grant is hopefully awarded. If it's not awarded, you don't pay anything else to me. Um, that, that's all that, that I am compensated.
Hey, Jordan, as far as a floor plan goes, so the room has to be made available in case of an emergency to be filled quickly. Um, is, the assumption would be is that space needs to be fairly open, um, or if there are objects and stuff in it, they would have to be movable to keep that space open.
Sure, so the nice part is, when, when you calculate your square footage that you need for your population, it is dependent on what you are using the area for. Um, FEMA has requirements for, um, if it is an, and I might get this a little bit wrong, just reciting it off memory. The, if it's an open floor plan with no fixed um, no fixed furniture, um, you reduce the, or you increase the um square footage by fifteen percent to account for egress. Um, if it's an open floor plan with fixed furnish, furnishings, um, you increase it by, I believe, twenty-five percent. And if it's a more closed-off um area with fixed furnishing, you would increase it by thirty-five percent. So as long as you can balance your benefit-cost ratio to be, still be competitive, if it is a closed-off area, you can actually gain more square footage because of that increase, um, be, because of the furniture, if that makes sense. So if you had a classroom with um, kind of like uh you guys have in here, I mean, the tables are movable, movable, but you know, the bookshelves are not, so that could potentially qualify as um fixed furniture, you would actually need twenty percent more square footage as opposed to a gymnasium where it would be fifteen percent. So then you can actually have a greater square footage and potentially a greater grant, as long as you balance that benefit-cost ratio.
Anyone else?
Shape of the structure?
Whatever you want it to be, um, you know, Spencer. Whatever you want it to be. Um, you know, Spencer is, you're aware, is a monolithic dome. It's a concrete dome. Um, it sounds very closed-off and dark. I'll tell you that they are very, very, uh, well put together on the inside, as well as the outside. Um, Johnson Creek in, um, southern Wisconsin has a five dome school, and they're actually building three more, um, right now. And they did a great job, um, of having very bright and open spaces, um, windows. Um, so those generally for a large structure are more cost-effective to meet FEMA's, um, requirements for a safe room. However, it could be a square and be conventionally constructed, just, um, you know, with a concrete precast deck for the roof. Um, so it, it can be whatever you want, um, whatever you want it to be.
Good. Okay, I think that's all our questions.
All right.
I thank you very much, or we thank you very much for your time and your information.
Absolutely.
I will be in touch with you soon. Okay?
Sounds good. And if you have any other questions, feel free to email me or give me a call. I'd be happy to, uh, answer any of your questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jordan.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
Bye. I didn't know that until, uh,
The other day.
The other day.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, all right. Then we are going to move to other business and, uh, no, I'm so sorry, we have, um, additions to the agenda. We need to, uh, hire a part-time interpreter. Did you want to explain anything about Chris?
Um, just that we are in need of a part-time translator, um, with, uh, with our, some of our Hispanic students. We need to make sure that we can, not only with the students, but with the parents. So, big one would be working with our students, a couple hours a day, maybe not every day, but just a part-time, so we can at least get them, um, moving forward to the English language more, so.
If I could have a motion to hire a part-time interpreter.
I'll make that motion.
Kira, is there a second?
I'll say.
Tom? All right. Any questions about hiring a interpreter? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is approved. Um, and then next we will, um, so we can discuss and improve, uh, the FEMA grant on the presentation we just heard. Uh, do we have further discussion from anyone? I just said I had no idea it could be something other than a dome shape, so that's definitely more appealing. Although Carrie and I both did visit Johnson Creek last year, and, and Tom, yeah, they had five doing three more, and it was wonderful. It was beautiful.
So what we would be doing is basically, um, approving the FEMA grant application. Right now, I mean, we're not, we're not, we don't know what the dollar amount's gonna be. It's, it's simply
All's we are saying is.
Application to, to get started.
Yep. And and if he can make it by January twenty-second, would be great. And if he doesn't, then we would move on to the following year. He was very, I shouldn't say very, he was confident that he could, he could get it done unless something comes up. With the amount of money that they have increased everything, and just like he said, I, I, I don't think we're behind the eight ball, but I think if we're gonna look at doing this, I think we need to move on it. And, and at least then we have a couple, two and a half months to work at it, so.
So what we would need then is we would need to make, someone to make a motion to approve, um, for the Loyola School District to begin the FEMA grant process.
I'll make that motion that we, that we proceed with the FEMA grant application process for the Loyola School District.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
What else?
Kim? Does anyone have any further questions, concerns about starting the FEMA grant process?
I think we probably should, you know, probably, um, get the process started more sooner than later, um, as far as scheduling some informational meetings, um, get more specifics on what we're looking at, and.
I think what Jordan, once he starts the application and then we get the approval from the, we have to get it from the city for us to, then I think that all starts right after that, so.
So the nice thing about it is, he's written, one, two, four of them. So he knows the process, and I think, right now, I think we just start thinking about what are we looking at?
The floor plan we'll need.
Putting in there, yeah. So. I think this is all working towards the bigger picture that we talked about, and have been talking about, so.
What's that?
Put ice hockey rink inside it.
It's a good idea. It's one thing we don't have here. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the FEMA grant application process, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, I believe that was it for additions, so we'll move into other business, and we can start, do you want to start with the principal's report or yours? Okay, Mrs. Pop, would you like to start?
Um, homecoming week was the week of October fifth, and the elementary students had their own set of dress-up days, and they really enjoyed that this year. There was great participation. I think they're excited about being back to school. Um, we currently have seventeen students that are virtual. We do have one confirmed family that is bringing their children back next quarter, and I think we've got another one or two that are also going to bring their children back next quarter. And at this time, I don't have any others that have requested to go virtual, so we would be gaining more back into the building on the elementary end. Uh, the Clark County nurses were here yesterday. They, uh, did a flu shot clinic, and it was free to anyone who was under eighteen, so they took in our kiddos and took care of that. There were about approximately fifty students in the elementary that got their shots yesterday, and then they held a clinic, uh, up, right outside the doors here for the public after that, in that nice snowstorm that we had. Um, kind of looking toward the future for, for what I want to work on with those teachers, uh, continuing to kind of go through math curriculum, because we had a really good start on that the last couple of years, and keeping those K-12 conversations going and moving that forward, especially with the purchase of a new curriculum. Uh, also initiating this year, getting the, uh, EOL and English teachers going, uh, looking at curriculum and getting standards. There are new standards that were just released. There were the those for English just this summer, so getting the teachers in, in with those. And then we're working kind of diligently to kind of build capacity for the technology that the teachers are using, and it's getting better all the time. We keep hearing some compliments on that, which is good. So keep moving that forward.
Thank you. Mr. Deacon?
Uh, so coming up, we have, uh, on our in-service on Friday, we have Dave Looney coming for PLC Leadership Team Development. Um, and so we'll give him an opportunity to talk with the leadership team, uh, and then kind of move our path forward with our PLC and development, redevelopment. Uh, we have developed a list of enrichment ideas for our get time, which we are looking to implement some of those starting quarter two. Again, we've also successfully completed homecoming. I think it was nice for the students to have something that seemed to kind of back the way it used to be. Uh, so we had some daily activities during get time when they stayed in their homeroom groups. And then on Friday, we were able to have a half-day where, uh, the kids were able to stay in their homerooms, get out and do some activities outside, and we were blessed with great weather, um, so that, that helped out that day significantly. So it was a good, good event, um, for the kids. Uh, last week, we kicked off our LEG, Loyal Enrichment Group, and our BLOP, Behavior Loss of Privilege. I felt both were a success, so, um, we're gonna keep doing those weekly on Wednesdays and, um, Thursdays. Uh, LEG will be on Thursdays, BLOP will be on, uh, on Wednesdays, so, um, it's a good opportunity for our kids, um, as well, uh, in both capacities, whether it's behavior, um, reteaching, or if it's academic reteaching. Uh, also looking at contacting and have been contacting our parents of virtual students, and also those that have students at risk, and trying to utilize some of that early release time, and then looking forward to some of those additional days where we could bring our virtual students onsite, and they could connect with their teachers, whether it's for an hour or two. Uh, it'd be nice to have that connection for them, and then also for our students not doing well in courses, to have kind of some remedial time, uh, maybe one-on-one or small group with the, with the staff. Uh, the staff is, was very receptive to it. We had about, uh, ten, twelve students stay last Friday after school on the early release day. Um, and I, you know, it, it parallels, right? So they stay and they get a little work done. And when I looked at grades on Monday, you know, a bunch of students fell off my grade weekly tracker, um, because of that time they spent. So, um, it was nice to see that. When you talk to the kids, yeah, it probably wasn't the most fun for them, but in a sense, they were here, they got some stuff done, and it worked out really well, so. Uh, and the feedback from the families with the virtual students, they liked the idea of having that when there was no one on site, because that's the intent of why they're, why they're staying virtual, um, to be able to have that opportunity to come and connect with teachers. So we're looking forward to doing, um, some more of that. Um, today, our, our postcards arrived, so our, kind of our positive postcard project, I know that was discussed, um, earlier at some of the board meetings, uh, kind of networking, so between, uh, Mrs. Pop and myself, uh, with the staff, uh, and the, the adults in the building, we're gonna get these out, and it's just a little great news thing from Loyola that uh, we'll kind of try to get everyone at some point in time, um, during a grading period, try to get one of these sent home. So there's always something good we can say about what our, our kids are doing. Moving forward, uh, gonna be screening our at-risk students with Star Reading and Math. Uh, end of term grade reviews, it's already coming up quickly, uh, with the end of the first quarter, so looking at those students, monitoring them weekly, and then when we get to that final, um, grade posting, to see, we may have some students that will have to make up some credits, unfortunately. Uh, we continue to have Jesse from CISA onsite to kind of supplement our technology, uh, learning curve, and he's been fantastic. We've gotten really good feedback from the staff, and I sat, talked with him for a little bit on the phone, and great feedback from him about our school and about our staff, um, of where we started in August and where we are at this point in time. So it was good to get that feedback from him. So we're gonna continue to engage that opportunity. It's been very positive for us. Uh, parent-teacher conferences in November coming up, um, looking at doing, uh, potentially making some connections there, scheduling off of elementary to make it convenient with parents and reaching out to them uh, virtually on the phone, uh, and, uh, targeting again our students that, uh, that may need some additional instruction or maybe some additional help. Uh, winter sports begin coming up shortly, so that'll be kind of the next thing on the dock there for our after-school activities. Um, kind of reviewed the WI Health Guidelines for Winter Sports. Uh, we have Veterans Day coming up, uh, program. We are gonna do a program. Uh, here at the school, it'll be streamed into the classrooms, and then we're looking at, uh, kind of keeping it similar, so there will be kids involved with coordinating some of the stuff, but, uh, like I said, the gym will be available for, uh, some of our veteran guests, uh, and then we'll keep, uh, them masked and social distanced, but at the same time, we'll get everyone involved in it by streaming it to the classroom, so try to keep that somewhat normal as well, too. So some great things coming ahead.
Hey, I have not heard about BLOP before. Can you just give me kind of a confidential example of like a child that might be going through that?
Yeah, so, uh, really, it's a behavior, kind of a behavior reinforcement time, so uh, I would say we can look at it in two facets. One could be attendance, truancy, uh, or tardies, uh, excessive tardies. They would utilize that time on Wednesdays to gain some of those ti- minutes back that, that they've lost because they're tardy to class. Uh, so in that capacity, you know, three to five tardies, we'd be having those conversations about spending sixty minutes after school to, to make up some of that time. Otherwise, it's, it's based a lot on behavior. It, it would really be the repetitive behaviors. Um, so if it's not working to kind of have that teacher dialogue with them, that teacher conferencing, uh, and then I'll, you know, be conferencing with them, and they're still not understanding kind of what the expectations are um, in class, so it could be classroom behavior, classroom, uh, disruption, maybe some non-compliance, um, disrespect, uh, in some capacity. Um, we've had a couple where it's, you know, just like school rules, in a sense, where they may be kind of hard, fast, uh, rules, where, um, you know, leaving school grounds or something like that, when you shouldn't be leaving school grounds, um, or just being somewhere where you shouldn't be, and then, uh, utilizing that to kind of reteach what those, uh, give them some reflection time, I guess we can call it, for, um, on a Wednesday after school, so.
And is that usually an hour, or?
Yeah, so it's for an hour, uh, set aside for, for three thirty to four thirty. Uh, some kids could only be assigned thirty minutes depending on their makeup time in a sense, but it, the minimum would be thirty, the max would be sixty.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Lindner, onto superintendent's report.
I have a thank you here. Uh, thank you for the plant and thinking of us, uh, from the family of Gladys Toma. Uh, it's Gil Lindner's, Lindgren's mother. Okay? Um, real quickly, uh, talking about FEMA grant, uh, we also applied for a charitable foundation grant. We'll see how things work out with, with those two things. Little up, up, update on, um, we have, we have a team that met with, um, has been meeting with Myron Construction, just kind of going through our facility, um, trying to get ideas and put together things that will make our facility most efficient, and our, our, all our facilities. So, uh, it's been an ongoing, ongoing process. Also, uh, for employees that, um, that are either quarantined, um, are sick and, and get a COVID test, or have children that are, that are quarantined or have COVID, that have to stay home and, and watch, watch these, their children. Um, we have, uh, employees, staff filling out a, um, some paperwork on Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FFCRA. You heard me talk about this earlier in the year. Um, so we have two acts where Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, and, uh, that would help cover them the first ten days, um, of their quarantine, and then if it needs to be longer, um, it's up to twelve weeks of an Emergency FMLA Expansion Act. So, any employees that are, have had, had deal with this, um, they are coming in and filling out this paperwork. If they get a test, they bring the printable copy back. We put this together, and this is covering our, our staff members. Um, lastly, I would just like to thank, um, all our staff at school, our, Mr. Deaconman and Mrs. Pop, uh, for being here and putting it together for eight weeks thus far, and, and had some speed bumps, but a lot of people are going above and beyond to make sure that our, our students, our, our kids of the community are, are getting their education, and, and we're here, so, um, knock on wood. Hope things continue. Hope things continue, um, but I just appreciate everything that everyone has done, and you, the board, and we're all stuck together and, um, through tough times and, and things are going, going all right, so, okay, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we need to set some meetings, so, uh, we have our annual meeting Monday night. What time does that start?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, okay, and then we need afterwards, as our, we're having an assurance presentation. Is that gonna be Monday?
I don't think that's gonna be ready yet.
No, okay, do we want to have a special board meeting after the annual meeting to set the levy and things? So we'll do that. Okay, so we'll set the budget levy right after that, so should we say like eight thirty? Uh, student success and curriculum present next month. What would be the date for our, our meeting?
We got it on the eighteenth, but we have a buildings and grounds, I think that.
We do, Myron, we're having a something with Myron.
Six o'clock, we have that night.
On the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So the eighteenth, we have Myron at six P.M.
That's what I have on my thing.
And then we have our meeting at seven P.M. Uh, so Student Success, um, and Curriculum Committee, that is, uh, Carrie, Harlan, and Kim. Do you guys want to try to meet before that date?
I can meet. What do you got, Gold?
Nothing, I'll sign it, I think.
Okay.
I mean, I got Wednesday off, so. Otherwise, after six.
So what date are you thinking?
Whenever, I'm pretty open.
Chris, do we need any other meeting?
I'm good, I, what do you think about the eleventh?
Other than it's better to stay. Just throw it up there.
Okay, they didn't care about my birthday, so.
Fourth?
I can do the eleven.
Maybe eleven, doesn't matter to me.
Mm-hmm.
But the fourth, either one.
At six?
Whenever, I'm off, so whenever, it's okay.
All right, seven eleven? Yep.
Yes.
Student success.
Yeah, and curriculum, yeah.
Do you think we should schedule, maybe after we have our regular be, maybe at the end of the month, um, do you think we should schedule a bill, like a, a Buildings and Grounds meeting just to start talking about the dome? Just to start getting some ideas, or do you think that's too soon?
Um, I would say let's think about it, but I would say, have it in the back of your mind, I, and think of some time, dates, because I think we need to, and I think maybe Monday, we can maybe look at it and.
Okay, talk about it Monday after the annual meeting? Okay, do we have anything else? Any, uh, public comments, Mr. Widner, come in, though?
No.
No, okay, then I would have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Carrie, would you say that? Second, we are adjourned.